Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Monday, February 13th Fayetteville City Council meeting in order. Welcome to those who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us remotely. At this time, we ask Assistant Pastor Norris Bonner from Truvine Ministries would come to the podium for the invocation. Okay. Luckily, we have a lot of clergy on the panel here, so... Counselor, you mind? All right, so if we could all stand for the prayer by Councilmember McNair immediately following the prayer, if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your love and your kindness, your tender mercy, your love forevermore. Father, we ask you to be in the midst of this meeting on tonight, and Father, we thank you for your advanced blessing that you have bestowed upon the city. Father, we accept and receive change in a positive manner. We accept love, God. God help us to join together that we might bring change in this community into Fayetteville, North Carolina. Father, touch every member on this board. God give us the heart to serve, to love, and to bring unity. And Father, touch everyone in this audience on today. Settle their minds and their hearts. Bring us closer together. Together we stand, divided we shall fall. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, this is a republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman McNair, Minister McNair. Also, we thank you so much for the invocation.
Amen.
At this time, we'll move to the announcements. Councilmember Harry, you had an announcement?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements I would like to share. For one thing, because of this council and other councils, over the years, we have pushed forward for the Merkison Road Corridor to be a number-one priority. I remember the days when it wasn't as much support, but thanks to this council and previous councils, I'm happy to announce that there's a lot of progress that's going on the Merkison Road Corridor. And because those of us that directly represent the corridor, Councilwoman Jensen, Councilmember Benatelli, and Councilmember Ingram, we have come... Did I say it right?
Benavente.
Benavente, I'm sorry. I do... Sorry, Mario. We will be having a Merkison Road Special Projects Meeting where all of the projects that's going on within the Merkison Road Corridor that the city of Fayetteville is involved in, financial assistance that the city of Fayetteville offers small business owners, along with Fayetteville State University being a part of that presentation. That's going to be on March the 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:30. It's going to be right here in city council chambers, and I hope that everyone will... That can, please come and be a part of that meeting. And also, if you all just give me a personal note here, I wouldn't dare let this night pass without saying, "Happy birthday" to my beautiful wife this month, and "Happy Valentine's Day" to her and everyone else. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and happy birthday to your lovely First Lady as well. At this time, like to, just before we move into the announcements, like to congratulate Fayetteville's own Josh Williams, a member of the Kansas City Chiefs for victory in the Super Bowl, represented our city and our community in a great way. Fayetteville State graduate, Jack Britt graduate, and really represented us on a global stage yesterday victoriously. So, congratulations to Mr. Williams and his team for a great accomplishment. Though I know I have a colleague who is supportive in spirit, and he's a Philadelphia Eagle fan, but great game and great representation of the city. At this time, we ask that the leadership of Triple Nickel would come forth, have a presentation by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. You'd meet her at the podium.
I can read it if you see.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you all. You all took over our whole back row. I appreciate you all for being here today. I did want to acknowledge you all for your hard work, and thank you for keeping up the legacy. Whereas black soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen played an indispensable role during the World War II, they joined the fight for freedom even when they were not completely free themselves. During the war, they served as fighter pilots, artillery men, combat engineers, signalmen, and infantrymen. But more often than not, their innate skills, courage, and dedication to duty were overlooked or ignored. Whereas on December 31st, 1943, 20 young African-American men enlisted were ordered by the Fort Benning, Georgia, to be trained as parachutists in early 1944. Sixteen of these young men completed requisite training in spite of being subjected to treatment designed to make them fail, and were awarded the Civil Rings of Qualified Parachutists, and whereas the 555th Parachute Infantry Battalion was activated at Camp McHale, North Carolina, on November 25th, 1944, under the command of Captain James Porter, often thought of as the father of the 555th, and whereas the 555th Parachute Infantry Battalion was nicknamed the Triple Nickel because of its numerical designation and the selection of 17 of the original 20 members, colored test platoon from the 92nd Infantry Buffalo Division. And whereas in 1945, the 55th was ordered to provide a reinforced company for participation in operation, Firefly in Oregon and California, Japanese balloon bombs, and natural fires were causing forest fires along the Pacific coast. The 555th troopers were the nation's first line of defense. At Camp Pendleton, Oregon, the company was trained in smoke jumping, techniques developed in the 1930s by the U.S. Forest Services, and means of combat wildfires. And whereas, without no doubt, the courage and competency of black members paved the way for the integrated military and civilian societies that all Americans enjoy today. The 555th Parachute Infantry Association was founded as a vehicle designed to pay homage to the brave troopers and maintain their memory. They were a vanguard of freedom. Now therefore, I, Courtney Banks McLaughlin, Mayor Mitch Colvin, the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and behalf of the city council and the Samuel Council Chapter, do hereby honorably proclaim the month of February 2023 to honor the Triple Nickel's 555th Parachute Infantry Association. And I do want to allow you to speak and tell a bit, a little bit about your chapter because the Triple Nickel have several organizations or chapters within the United States. So if you can just tell a little bit about the organization, and if anyone is interested in joining the Triple Nickel, how do they go about joining? If you can just tell a little bit also about all the wonderful things you do for our community, especially for our youth, and thank you again.
Good evening. Trying to figure out where to start it. This organization that we're in, I'm the chairperson for the Triple Nickel Association. I have six chapters. Samuel Council just happens to be one of my chapters. I have a chapter in Jacksonville, Florida. I have a chapter in Columbus, Georgia. I have a chapter in Atlanta, Georgia. I have a chapter in Durham, North Carolina, and also I have a chapter in Virginia. And this is what makes the whole association. And inside of our association, we try to do things to better the city, better the people here, and we try to give back to the community, and that's our main goal, giving back to the community in honoring those black paratroopers for what they've done. I have one of my persons right here who's made something special in our organization, what keeps us heading forward, and his name is Trooper Tabron. He's going to talk to you about his program that he's designing.
Good evening. I am Trooper Tabron. I am the scholarship chairman for the 555th Parachute Infantry Association, Samuel Council Chapter, which is the largest of all the chapters, and also the busiest of all the chapters. We provide scholarships to all the high schools in Cumberland County. We normally give four scholarships to all the high schools, totaling 48 to 52 scholarships a year. And in September, we completed 28 years of providing scholarships to the local community. We are working right now on our 29th year, and our goal is always the same, 48 to 52 $1,000 scholarships a year. And we've been very, very successful at that. We provide, divide ourselves into teams, and every team owns a school, and they raise their money for their respective schools. So as you talk to the members, they'll tell you, "I'm on Team 71st," Team E.E. Smith, or whatever team they happen to be assigned to. This program is very, very important to us because the youth in our community are important to us. We say all the time, "We are all blessed," and the blessings will continue to come to us as long as we continue to bless somebody else. So we thank everybody that contribute to our program. Not only do the individuals in our chapter contribute, but we have other chapters, 82nd Airborne Division Association, the 173rd Airborne Division Association, also Vet's Unlimited, which happened to be my Corvette club. We all contribute toward that program. They all own a school or a series of schools. Actually, my Corvette club raises money for three of those schools, but all the money goes into one big pile, and it takes care of those students. So you are welcome to be a Triple Nickel member. The only requirement to be a Triple Nickel member is the desire to do community service. It has nothing to do with whether or not you served in the military, served one day, or jumped out of one perfectly good airplane. Just come and be prepared to work because we do a lot of great things in the community, and we try to make a difference. Thank you so very much for your time.
And those who would like to come join us, we have our next meetings in February this month, and those who are interested, come and see me after we can do on this here, and we'll talk about that. Thank you very much.
Trooper Tabron, can you all ask the members of the Triple Nickel if they would come up and take a picture with your proclamation?
Oh, yes.
All right. Put it this way, folks. Three, two, one.
All right.
Thanks, Dean.
Good job, guys.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. At this time, council will move forward to the city manager's report. Mr. Manager? All right, head nod. All right, item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. Council, can I have a motion to approve? All right, motion by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Benavente. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? All right, those in favor, council show of hands. Well, we'll see how that works. All right, is Councilmember Ingram on the line? All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimously by those present. Moving to item 7.0 is the consent. Council will look to you for vote on consent. There's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Any discussion on the motion? We'll try the iPads. All right. All right, look to you for your votes, council. All right, show of hands, that's the previous vote. All right, show of hands, those in favor? All right, motion carries. All right, item 8.0 is the public forum. This is a time that Fayetteville residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on the items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, I ask that you please reserve your comments until the public hearing section. We're asking that speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, shall refrain from any personal attacks. Those seated in the audience, we ask that you would also remain from clapping, yelling, any audio expressions of approval or disapproval of the comments made during the forum. Failure to abide by these rules may subject the offender to removal from the council chambers. So when your name is called by the city clerk, ask that you please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light turn on the podium, from green to yellow, it means that your time has began, and you'll have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the light turn red, or you're notified that your time has expired, we'll be notified that your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time or engage in dialogue with the speakers. With that being said, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, sir. We have seven speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Rick Iwansky.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Rick Iwansky. I live at 2308 Colgate Drive here in Fayetteville. I'd like to again come and speak to you and ask for you, of you, accountability, transparency, and reform on behalf of my granddaughter, Jada Johnson. Tonight, I want to share with you a couple of things. First of all, I've done a little bit of more searching online, and I found a few things that might be of interest to you. First of all, the Hartz program has all their data up online. You can go there and find anything you want about the Hartz program. It's very detailed. It's Microsoft BI, Business Intelligence. Anybody has access to it. The other thing I'd like to say is that I went to grants.gov, and I did a search for mental health response, and I got about 500 or plus 500 hits. There's a lot of money out there for this particular cause. That was just for city governments, by the way. I did not go into details. The very first one that was in the list, I pulled up, and it has a cap of $550,000. It is shared collaboration, but I'm sure there's others in there that you could probably find that might help out, get some funding for the mental health issues. I'm going to leave that with the clerk, if that'd be okay. Thank you. And make sure everybody gets a copy. I won't have the one. Lastly, I'd like to leave with you a passage from the book of Habakkuk, who was a prophet, whose entire work was about the question of the justice of God's government in the world. Him and Job were pretty famous for their complaints. I'd like to just talk very quickly about his first complaint and give a quote of it. "How long, O Lord, must I cry for help, and you will not listen, or cry out to you violence, and you do not intervene? Why do you let me see inequity? Why do you simply gaze at evil? Destruction and violence are before me, and there is strife and discord. This is why the law is numb, and justice never comes, for the wicked surround the just. This is why justice comes forth, perverted." The reason it says this in here, and by the way, this is the Catholic Bible, that the law is numb because the Lord is silent. The law given by priests and prophets who gave the law in those days has proven to be ineffective, and so appeared to the citizens to be cold, unreceptive, and powerless. I ask you, please, please get something going on mental health response. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Ms. Theresa Chance.
Good evening, Ms. Chance.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin and the city council. It's a privilege for me to be before you tonight. My name is Theresa Chance. I reside at 2413 Moody Street, and tonight I've come before you petitioning for city water on Moody Street. And if you're not familiar, Moody Street is directly behind the U-Haul place off Galisbee Street. We have city water on both sides, and we're in the middle, but we have well water. So tonight, I'm petitioning for that, as well as streetlights. I personally came to PWC, had them to come out and install two poles, and put streetlights on that I pay $40 a month out my Social Security disability check for. And my daughter always helped me out. My daughter was number 37 homicide here in Cumberland County, Maggie Fullmore. And I have an 18-year-old autistic son left. So I'm disabled, and my autistic son. I don't have my daughter here to help me. So I'm petitioning, you know, for PWC and for the city, because I went before the county. They say it's the city problem. So on January the 17th, I went forward to Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. They sent me here. So please, we need this, you know, and I can't keep giving this out my Social Security check because the streetlights should be the city and county problem, not mine. And I don't want to sound like an angry person, but it's too much money pouring into the city that we... Y'all wasting money, and you're helping the rich, but you're not really helping the poor, you know? And I don't want to keep giving my money out, my Social Security check, you know, for city... And the PWC charges a $74 flat rate for sewer, but we don't have water. But when you put the bill, the bill averaged $400, $500 on up. It's like we paying for city water, and we don't have city water, you know? And, you know, I'm just saying, even with the driveway, the street, it's a dirt path. And I got the pictures here. I want you to see. I already gave District 2 Keila Ingram the pictures and the PWC lock bills, you know? Please, you know, help, help me and help our residents on Moody Street. We say that we're a can-do city. Please, help us. Can do, do. Don't do, do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chance. Mr. Manager, I'm looking on the sign-up sheet. It said that this street, we've checked her address. It said this street is in a donut hole, unincorporated area. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Can voluntary annexation take place?
We've had, and we'll have additional conversation. Lauren, if you could get that... Ma'am, if you'd like to leave it with us, we'll make sure you get it back if you'd like. We've been in contact with her, and we need to have the petition come from the homeowner.
Okay.
The property owner.
All right, Ms. Moody. Ms. Chance, someone will be in touch with you, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and for the listening audience, what that is, the donut holes are areas in and around the city that are still in the county. It doesn't make sense that one side is city, another side may be county, and this is one of those pockets that sometimes the... Because according to state law, they have to voluntarily ask to be brought into the city, so there's a process. So I just kind of want to explain the background to it so that you can understand it. But there are 16 donut holes here when annexation took place. Certain areas were left out, which I don't think that was right, but in a case that what we have now with the statute of the way it is, the city is not allowed to involuntarily annex. We have to have a petition and ask, so... And it comes with those services. So Ms. Chance, they'll help you with the process. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, our next speaker is Mr. Brian Mello. Mr. Brian Mello.
Good evening, Mr. Mello.
Mayor and city council. My name is Brian Mello, and I stay at 4306 Bragg Boulevard. And I've actually been dealing with the place I'm staying at actually turned off my water. And I went to code enforcement, talked with Crystal, talked with Derek Planner, and talked with Mr. JR, the head of code enforcement, talked with Mr. Henderson at the Health Department. Everybody's making me do the runaround until I actually made a meeting, made it to come to the meeting until somebody actually wanted to make something get done to me not having water at the place that I'm staying at. And it's like, how can I be without water since December 6th, and they can legally turn it off? And I'm making all this stuff for the city, with the city, and it's like, I'm stressed out, and the city wants to do, says they can do stuff for people, but it seems like... And the city wants to do, says they can do stuff for people, but it seems like people can't do anything but tell them that you have to go here, you have to go there, you have to do this runaround of everything, and it's the bureaucratic tape that you have to go through. And it's like, why? So I'm just trying to figure out why the city can actually do all this, but say I have to take it to the courts. I'm taking it to the courts. And I have to still do the runaround and have no water for, with two dogs that are service animals there and they're dying.
All right. Sir, are you saying this to make sure I understand? Is this your landlord that turned it off?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's literally everybody around me has water, but I'm the only one that didn't have water.
Okay. All right. So I'm sure you've been in touch with code enforcement and maybe human relations deals with code compliance.
Yeah, I talked with Derek Planner and after I had Crystal come out there and look at it, she had a whole bunch of code violations. And then Derek Planner came out there with Mr. JR and they all said they go to Health Department. Health Department sent me an email saying go to code enforcement. It's like, I was having to do a whole circle of everybody doing, telling me go here, go there, go to this person, go to that person, go to this person, and nobody can tell me who to go to.
Well, I got you. So since it's a landlord and I think you've sent it to code enforcement, I'm sure they'll take you through the process of being able to see if there's a violation on his part or her part.
And then the same thing is I did that, they had multiple violations.
Right, no.
But then at the same point in time.
Yeah, I'm following. I'm just simply saying that if it's been, they've been notified, so now it'll go through the process of compliance with it. But I know that didn't help you with your current situation.
No, they said because it's extended stay, because it's a hotel, that they can do whatever they want and it's dealing with the city, the Health Department. The Health Department has to deal with that. And the Health Department literally told me with the person that actually, they told me to get in contact with, Mr. Planner told me to get in contact with, he said to go to code enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, sir. We, we actually will follow up with you tomorrow on this. We have your contact information. Our human relations unit, as the mayor mentioned, also deals with fair housing and some accommodation issues and will follow up. Not sure we can help you, but within the power that we have, we will. We will give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mello. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Angela Tatum-Malloy.
Ms. Malloy, good, good evening.
Do I get the same amount of dialogue that was just given?
If you have a question, absolutely.
You each have this page in front of you. It's, we're here talking about the OCS, Office of Community Safety, which creates a community approach to the community problems. The reason we keep finding ourselves here, and you're afforded to see me up here speaking to you time and time again, is because we keep looking for solutions within the system that is actually causing the harm. We will keep finding ourselves wasting time on things that don't work. City manager, you stated in a previous meeting that you were searching for an assistant to be your additional eyes, which is going to cost the taxpayers seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars for you to get an extra set of eyes. In the description, it also states that you prefer a person that they be a sworn local law enforcement officer. Now, I'm not understanding why we're still looking within the system for the solutions. This is a prime example of what we call insanity, doing the same things and expecting a different result. I do believe that you're looking for answers. I, I wholeheartedly do. Answers to our mental health response, our unhoused community, measurable, measurable violence interruption, independent oversight, so that we can begin to move forward. I also want to believe that our mayor and a couple of other members are looking for the same thing. Mr. Dawkins, I've kind of given up a little hope for my district representative, but I'm going to push forward.
No, no personal, just keep, keep it on the issue, sir.
Oh, we can't call him?
No personal, yeah.
So just the mayor? Okay. City manager, you don't have to recreate the wheel here. As we mentioned before, there's the heart system. Holistic, holistic, empathetic, em- empath, yes, empathic, assistance response team. Contrary to what you may feel, there is rarely a holistic approach when you're doing anything for the community, for community safety, coming from a system. That includes community safety, black maternal and infant health, that is going to come from the institution that created the disparities. We have to stop looking within the institutions that we're trying to solve the problems with. Hiring a seventy-one thousand dollar assistant, that's fine for you. And we, and I'm not saying that you shouldn't have an assistant, but that is still an institutional approach and not a community approach. I'm a huge example of what it looks like when a large medical system is trusting and finding, using a community response for black mothers and black babies and funding community people. They're funding thirty duelists, community duelists, that are non-medical to approach a problem that we're trying to do as well in our community safety. And they're stepping back and allowing a different approach, even with it being uncomfortable. What I'm saying is give the community a chance to help a system that is not working here in Fayetteville. Say yes to OCS.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Good evening, Mr. Cardona.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Assistant, here, council, how you doing today? My name is Jose I. Cardona. I live at two-thirty-three Addison Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. This is an empty box of fifty rounds of ammunition, a forty-caliber pistol. It's empty. It's not going to kill nobody, it just sits there. And even if he was full of ammo, he still would not kill nobody. Mr. Benevente, the last time we were here, he put an article in front of you for you to read. I hope you did, because I didn't read it, but I could tell you that the bottom line of that article was dealing with the bullet. If you control the bullet, you control the piece of arm that it shoots out of. It's kinetic energy in a little container that is hit by a firearm pin. The police carry it and some of us got it. Some of us got it and it doesn't hurt nobody. But he takes a finger and a brain to put it in the container, excuse me, in the, in the, in the system to make it work. We have bullets right now on the records called rubber bullets, right, sir? We have rubber bullets. They don't kill. Police use it against riots, against rioters. They do make a little dent in your body. They do hurt a little bit, but it doesn't kill you unless somebody shoots you in the face with it. But we do have that available. Mr. Mayor, you're the one that screamed and said, "I want to do something to control this crime problem in this city." Correct. I want to help you. We need to put that bullet into this city. Whereas honestly, you ever seen, I get fifty rounds of rubber bullets. When I shoot somebody, I don't kill them, but I've got his attention. Yes, it's not going to stop them from going to another town and buying the bullets. But, Mr. Mayor, you have tried. It's not going to stop them from getting a shotgun. Shotgun, by the way, you don't need a license to go buy a shotgun from a pawn shop or, okay, any kind of rifle. It also, that bullet shoots and under barrel at least a signature. The signature can be recorded in a city police squad. How do you do that? Well, simple, you buy a gun, you have somebody shoot the first round. Could be the manufacturing or could be the pawn shop where you buy it. That signature, that bullet should be at the police headquarters. So when somebody does get shot and get killed, hello, you got the signature already, you're going to knock on the guy's house, which leads me to another point. We do not have, right now, none of you who bought a gun last year is recorded nowhere. In the pawn shop? No. They throw that away maybe a year, two years later. Cumberland County gives you one permit to buy ten guns, not one, ten. But guess what? A year later, boom, boom, boom. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Mr. McMillan, good evening.
Good evening. Sean McMillan, six-two-four Golden Ray Drive. We repeat what we don't repair. I'm here to echo calls for the establishment of the Office of Community Safety. There seems to be a cognizant, cognitive dissonance that occurs when local police and elected officials refer to national cases involving George Floyd or Tyree Nichols without acknowledging the real harm that's been done by a police force you have responsibility for, the FPD. Local police have taken the lives of Najee Higgins, Shakur McNair, Lawrence Graham, Kevin Grissette, Travis Smotherman, Joshua Oxendine, Adrian Roberts, Jason Walker, Justin Lifsay, and Jada Johnson. There's a need to transform our approach to public safety and an emphasized urgency that recognizes that more lives are at stake, the longer we delay. How do we end the cycle of violence, police violence? OCS is one of the best ideas for restructure that I've heard in my six years of advocacy. On average, police officers nationwide make one felony arrest per year. The vast majority of interactions between this lethally armed force and the communities is over low-level misdemeanor offenses that should never result in anyone's death. According to police scorecard.org, the FPD is among the most lethal in the state with more deaths per arrest than eighty-two percent of forces in small cities nationwide. Simply stated, the OCS and that approach removes police from many of the daily interactions, mental health response, unhoused liaison, community-led violence interruptions, interruptions that don't require a lethal response and are better stewarded by civilian experts. Greensboro and Durham ensured that there was sufficient civilian public safety infrastructure in place to support this shift and it would be wise of this council to do the same. Years ago, Greensboro hired a civilian oversight practitioner to steward this process and that investment is already paying dividends. The OCS director will also steward development of the CRB, which should be a joint legislative priority of this council during the current long session of the General Assembly. Please listen to what we're asking for. Instead of doing the least to provide a performative block check, the OCS needs to be a civilian-led and staffed. Eleven years ago, this council failed to follow recommendations of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Development to develop an impartial review of police officer misconduct. It's been two years since this council in a nine-to-one vote ignored recommendations to establish an oversight authority. Those were opportunities to turn this ship and create actual systemic change. In the words of James Baldwin, "I ask, how long must we wait for your progress? The time to act is now." All of us are known.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Our final speaker is, thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have one further, further speaker, Mr. Christian Mosley.
Good evening, Mr. Mosley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I understand that this evening on the agenda, you all will be discussing annexation of more territory to be able to come into the city. I believe that it's appropriate that in the spirit of Black History Month, that I ask, what is it that we get a piece of with any of this? There have been a lot of talks throughout the last couple of years of us talking about the market house, but we never discussed the people that were affected by that market house. We've doled out tens of thousands of dollars for celebrations of freedom that we don't really have, and we've doled out millions to change images on trash cans. And I understand that we can't make any personal statements, so I'll try to be professional. I still see the same faces at the CSL Plasma Center on Bragg Boulevard. They mostly look like me. At the beginning of this year, there was a vote on annexing about a hundred and sixty acres of land in District One. Done in a unanimous vote with no hesitation by any of the members sitting here today. And my question is, how do we get insured that we get a piece of that? I'm a victim and my family is a victim of having property and land stolen from them here in this community. We have land covenants that restrict anyone of Negro descent from buying houses in the Haymount area, specifically four hundred Westmont in the Haymount area. There is a land covenant on that property. So my ask is, what is going to be a tangible thing that's going to be done for, and I'm saying this specifically the black community and not just people with my melanin, but American descendants of slavery? The slavery that we talk so much about and that we verbalize so much, and yet we do nothing tangible for us. But there's a lot of money moving around and there's a lot of land moving around and it's extremely hard for us to get it. I'm in the middle of fighting Wells Fargo right now for questioning the authenticity and the efficacy of the purchase of my home because there was a suspicious amount of equity in it. Had to write a letter of explanation for that in this city. We no longer want to be residents here. We want to be owners. So I look forward to meeting you all. I look forward to becoming friendly with you all, but I would like to remind you that I am not your friend. We are not your friends, we are your constituents. But I am looking very much forward to getting to know you all and working with you, to see progress here in this city. Again, my name is Christian Mosley, fifty-three-fifteen Chesapeake Road, and that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley.
Have we had no further speakers?
All right. Thank you. Thank you all, all the speakers from public forum. Item nine-point-zero-one is the appointment of the Public Works Commission. This is an item that, as you know, by statute and the charter, the city council has to make an appointment. This item has come before us a few times and it was a request put in by Councilmember Benevente to bring this back to tonight's meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. At this time, I nominate applicant Joe Helacheck to be appointed to this PWC committee.
All right. This is a nomination by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Jensen for Mr. Joe.
Yes, correct, Helacheck.
Helacheck, all right. It's motion on the floor for nomination. So council, I look to you for your votes. Let's see if the iPads are in motion. All right. Show of hands, those in, those in favor? It's up, okay. All right. Motion to nominate Mr. Helacheck fails four to five. Those voting in favor, Councilmember, did we lose it? All right. So show of hands for the clerk's record. Those who were the four who voted for the nomination, Councilmember Benevente, McNair, Hondros, and Jensen. Those voting opposed, Colvin, Banks-McGloflin, Dawkins, Hare, and Thompson. All right. Motion fails five to four. Councilmember Banks-McGloflin.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to appoint Ted Moan. Before leaving here on his term, he served as the mayor pro tem. He has ten years plus experience working with, well, working with the city council or on the city council as well as partnership and working with PWC. I think that he would do a great job serving on the PWC. So that's my motion to appoint Mayor, well, I was going to say Mayor Pro Tem. That's my motion to appoint Ted Moan.
All right. It's motion by Councilmember Banks-McGloflin to appoint former councilmember Ted Moan as their second.
Are you doing it?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Jensen. All right. Those in favor of the nomination, Mr. Moan. Are we going to iPads or hands?
The iPads.
All right. It's up on the iPad. All right. Show of hands, those in favor of the motion? Councilmember Banks-McGloflin, McNair, Jensen. Those opposed? Councilmembers Colvin, Hondros, Benevente, Dawkins, Hare, and Thompson. All right. So Madam Clerk, do you have the four names that, that were remaining? I know it was Moan, Mr. Helacheck. Is that in the packet?
It's in the packet, sir. On the seat.
All right. Let me pull that up real quick. Hold on, Councilmember Hare, I'm coming. Hold on one second. All right. So... So... All right. All right, I got, I have them now. All right. Moving forward. That leaves remaining, former Councilmember Davis and Mr. Garthardt and Mr. Stewart. All right?
If I remember correctly, did not, I'm thinking it was Mr. Stewart, but candidate Stewart and candidate Moan, didn't they ask for their names to be withdrawn?
At my knowledge.
No?
No, Moan just couldn't make the meeting. He had a family issue when we had the interviews.
We didn't have another candidate?
No, the, the application section was closed, you know, for, so these were the applicants that had applied by the deadline. All right. Yes.
My understanding is, so we have three left or do we have?
We have, we have, out of the five, yes, there's three remaining.
Because we can't vote yet.
Well, well, yeah.
Mayor Colvin?
Sir.
I move that we nominate Joe Helacheck. My motion is in order, and if there's a second, I think we can proceed with that vote.
Madam Attorney, how does that work? I don't think you can reintroduce something when you're on the losing side of it back at the same meeting. I know there was some policy regarding that. But we-
Sir, I think you're referring to reconsideration, which is when the meeting has adjourned.
I get a second?
I was questioning that. I didn't, I didn't think during the same meeting you could do it, but Madam Attorney has a law degree. Mine is still pending.
I have a motion whenever we go-
All right. So it's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Show of hands, those in favor of the second vote again for Mr. Helacheck. No, he's, you got a motion and a second. So those in favor? We have to dispose of the motion, guys.
I vote on the iPad.
All right. So back to iPad. Show of hands, because iPad's inconsistent. Show of hands, those in favor of the motion on the floor. Councilmember Benevente, McNair, Jensen. All right. Councilmember Hare, you had something?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I would like to make a motion. I would like to nominate Mr. Christopher Davis for the, for the PWC board.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Hare to nominate the other applicant, Mr. Davis, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Show of hands with those in, in favor of said motion. We'll do by hands, y'all. All right. Madam Clerk, that motion is four to five. Motion dies. All right. And...
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Have a good evening.